Call meeting back to order.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Whenever Commissioner Yance is here, can we have a discussion on how we're gonna get this finished?
Yeah, yeah, I think we do.
Please.
Because, uh, we're running out of time.
Well, he's, you're, you're, uh, Chairman Nicholson may be gone Thursday.
I'll be here Thursday.
Okay, good. And, and then Commissioner Yance is gone next week, then you're gonna follow him.
I'm, I'm here Monday of that following.
But gone the rest of.
The rest of the week, I'll be gone Monday through Friday. Then I'll be back on Saturday and Sunday, which is still in the month of June.
So you're here on the twenty-fourth on the regular board meeting, is that what you mean? You're here on the Monday of the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I'll be here for all that day. I'm just leaving that next morning.
Okay.
The twenty-fourth is still open for everybody?
Yeah, it is. It just, if you're gonna, 'cause you, you talked about that a little bit, 'cause you need to do the budget ordinance and all that stuff. So either can you do that meeting, if not, we have to have another meeting to approve that.
But it'd make your life a whole lot easier if we got this thing finished up Thursday, correct?
Yeah, that way I got all next week to get it finalized and everything, and printed up, and the ordinance done, and then presented. Get it all through the ordinance at the regular meeting.
Okay.
All right. But we're really done with these figure board, and we have a discussion. Just look at this schedule, please.
I've got enough, does anybody want to stop?
I reckon I put some more thought into our four cent fund. You and I were having some discussion about that earlier in the process, and, um, I was thinking back, uh, when this fund was created, and I know there was some projects specified. But I, I was trying to think back what my position was initially on it, to be sure that I haven't told our citizens one thing and end up doing something else. I know, I know at times there's a possibility I'm gonna slip up and say I'm do this, and for some reason or reasons, end up having to change my mind. But I, I wanna keep that to a minimum as much as possible, and if I make a commitment, stick with it. So the reason I'm mentioning that is where I was initially was that fund was to be used for school projects. Now, if we expand it beyond just certain specified projects, I don't have a large concern about that, because we're basically sticking true to the initial concept. We said we're gonna use this fund for, for projects as needed. And, and so I know we dipped into it one time for Chestnut Grove. I see here on some information I have, some of those funds were actually paid back to the four cent fund, over, over four hundred thousand. Yes, right in front of you. It's right beside your name there, I believe. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, so I'm not as rigid or dug in on that as maybe it sounded like at one time I, I was. Now that I've had a chance to actually think about it some more and say, what did we really say to the public when this was created? Thank you. Can I ask a question, please, to the board, to anyone who, staff, anybody who, what, what is the purpose of our meeting with the school board? I know the sheriff is supposed to be here to discuss SROs, but is it, is it open to this? It was our original thing, and then it sort of got expanded the word, and we said, I guess it's the, the, headed to that. Originally, SROs, the sheriff was the original.
I advertise it as a joint meeting with the Board of Education, just like our last one was. But with the, you know, the indication in there that the public is invited to attend the open session portion, there will be a closed session portion, and even County Attorney Goddard will be here for that, and I've got the justifications for closed session from him for that closed session, just to deal with school safety issue. After that, there'll be an open portion afterwards for time for any kind of discussion that the boards may wanna have together. So it was, it was posted that way, so that way there's room for whichever you might decide to do after.
Thank you.
Just kinda get everybody's thought last night. I had a discussion with, uh, Mr. Morris and, or discussion with Commissioner Yance last night, on some of the capital projects, and one of them was the, uh, green box sites. Uh, maybe either holding off on the Pinnacle, Walnut Cove, or maybe just doing one, like the Walnut Cove, 'cause we got the fuel depot there. And it's bad shape, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it seems already be a money issue there, even if we didn't get that fixed. How's the board feel about that?
I think it's certainly worth considering, and, and, um, between the two, it sounds like there's a more critical need at Walnut Cove for various reasons. One is, it's a traffic hazard, and I think you can attest to that, Commissioner, and in all firsthand experience. We, we, you heard our, our director of arts, he, he talked about how his operation, and, and I picked this up from the public as well, is viewed as a quality part of the county's overall operation. I don't think we can look at our green box sites, all of them, particularly Pinnacle and Walnut Cove, and say these sites are where we, we would prefer for them to be. There, there's need for improvement. It all comes back to me, and you, you mentioned doing maybe one in this budget, and another later. It all comes back to how far we can stretch our funds. We, we set some, uh, lines, uh, twenty-five percent, no less than twenty-five percent in our fund balance. And we have to work, all we're trying to do around what we have to work with for this budget. If funding, if, if funds were unrea-, if we had unlimited funds, we'd be adding a sixth ambulance unit, we'd be doing the.
Twenty-four seventy-two?
No, I still couldn't go with it. I'm sorry, I just can't get a grasp of that concept. That's just beyond me.
Yeah, I know, we have trouble keeping employees here.
Well, there are other options. I don't even wanna talk about it or even think about it right now, really. But we just have to look at, okay, we're, we're doing a budget, like Commissioner Morris has alluded to. What's it gonna take to get this budget done? What are we gonna leave in, and what are we gonna take out to make it work? And that's, you've got five people interesting. I have my list priorities. I have one or two that are deal breakers. If, if it goes south, I knew, y'all guys, it's your budget, not mine. And you probably have one too. But what is it gonna take? When, when can we get together and come up with a budget?
Take.
Sure, just, 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 just put one little sentence in, as changes as recommended by Commissioner Walker, you got a budget.
Oh, I remember way back in January, when we, uh, somebody, uh, several people that thought that we had too many meetings last year. Anybody else remembers that thing? And it was like to me, we're, we're gonna be squeezing the deadline this year more than we ever have. I've got a list of items also that I made today that, uh, I think you gotta be creative here, you gotta be open-minded, and you gotta be flexible with that, uh, to let some things go that you might have originally thought you wanted. Uh, I heard on the news coming up here today that Wake County just finished their, uh, last night, and they did not increase their property tax. Finished it up, and, uh, take the budget, uh, passing my, my, six or seven, now, but there was no property tax increase. That's Wake County.
It's very, very rapidly growing area.
Second, second largest county by, by, by. So it's gotta be done, and we gotta get it done quick.
And there has, I think you had made a very good point, which remained at all, there, there needs to be give and take on the part of the commissioners, discussion, trying to work something out that, that nobody's gonna get totally their way. If, if anybody goes into the process expecting that, they're just complicating it for the rest of us. So there has to be some give and take, no matter whose views. I know to each of us, our view is important, but we got to consider the other commissioners too, to make this, make this happen.
You sound like my wife talking about our marriage.
It works in a marriage, same process.
I, I'll make a couple comments just here if I could.
Yes, sir.
Thing about the two meeting meetings reminds me that I saw on social media this weekend that somebody was wondering if we're gonna address the commissioner pay issue.
I see.
And, uh, I, you know, I've made my, my position clear on what that should be. I'm not, I'm just waiting to see if you guys wanna leave it the same or change it, you know, either way.
I think also the first.
My position is what it is, and it hasn't changed, so.
Uh, all I'm gonna say, Mike, what I'm saying is, I believe the person that put that on there was also insinuating that we would make special meetings just to get paid. And so far, what I've seen of that, none of us has done that.
Of course, we haven't been, the process lends itself to that. That's what the issue is. It's not, I didn't, I never accused anybody of doing, doing that, but it, it certainly can look that way. When you have two meetings in an afternoon, you're paid for both of them.
And then vice versa, if we go on a flat rate, and like, uh, what I've come into, what Commissioner Yance is coming to, we had things come up, when able to make them meet, and you still get paid for it, then it's gonna be a complaint from that also.
I wouldn't agree to that either. And I would, I would agree to a flat rate with a deduction for missed meeting, be my recommendation.
You remember Commissioner Carroll?
I'm up to you. It's up to you guys if you wanna take any action.
I'll, I'll just come out and appreciate that call, and the call, but I, I, I like it the way it is. Get paid if you're here. If you're not here, you don't get paid. You know what to pay.
Merritt, Merritt pays straight. The more you do, the more you get paid.
Like, if you're not here right now, you're not gonna get paid for this budget meeting. You are here, you get paid for it.
Now, we'll see. It's pretty low pay for what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody can honestly say they're doing this for the money, 'cause it's, it's definitely not there, but.
My intention was never to lower the commissioners' pay.
Right, and you said that before.
Have a process that didn't have a perceived conflict of interest. But, you know, I agree. I mean, I'm trying, I'm spending a lot of time out at the regular meetings, plus, you know, outside of the county a lot, every week going somewhere, so I'm not trying to lower the commissioner's pay. I'm just trying to put it under.
But could I kind of?
Maybe it needs to be more, I don't know.
Well, it's been the same basic pay for, uh, the whole fourteen years I've been on this board, right, Jim? It, it's gone up with, with longevity, COLAs, whatever, but the same basic pay for probably the last twenty years? That's a very interesting situation, to say the least. And, and, uh, Ron Carroll, back when he was commissioner, uh, we were being paid for, uh, ex, uh, mileage, and, and, uh, if you had, I think we got paid if we had to buy supplies, and, and I knew it was mileage. And he came up with an idea, a concept, okay, we don't need to be paying ourselves for mileage. Let's just figure a, a reasonable amount, kind of an average among commissioners, how much mileage we're being paid, add that to the meeting amount, and cover it all at one time. And, and there was some interest in doing that, but it never happened.
And that's the last. Way of doing business, having a flat triangle line, that's a lot unusual.
Yeah, that's his, that was his concept exactly, but it, it didn't happen. And since then, one of the reasons I mentioned that, Commissioner Morris, is since then, until you brought it up this year, and, and you'd obviously given it some thought, uh, it's just maybe been casually mentioned a time or two, and nothing ever really discussed about it. And I think anyone who sees it from the, from the side of actually doing it, is gonna, 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 I think a reasonable person would say, wow, you're not getting very much for all the time and effort that this takes. Anyhow, uh, I, I'll keep an open mind as far as where we go with this, but in, in deference to, uh, the process, we probably have so much other work to do, we might kind of wanna look at that later, maybe even.
I respect you guys leaving it the same if you wanna do that. If the public's not complaining to you, then.
I've, I've, I've never had a complaint on. I'm, I'm, well, I've never had a complaint. I've had questions about what we make, but when I tell people, it's, it's that old.
That's, that's the response I get.
The only good thing about going to a flat pay is, you know, about how much it's gonna cost a year to pay the commissioners doing their job. That, that's the only advantage to it, which right now you can kinda guess me, 'cause we usually typically don't have no more than two meetings a month, plus maybe one or two special meetings that come in effect, but.
It's a budget time, March, April, May, June.
Right.
It's gonna be your most meeting.
Right.
And you can never know how many meetings a person's gonna miss.
Right. And the other thing is, is like our committee meetings, I'm on three committees. I know you're on several, you're on several. Jimmy, I can't remember how many you're on, but.
Uh, three or four, I think.
But Eric there also kinda throws a little bit, you know, comparing apples to apples on that. Uh, 'cause Jamie, I think Jamie's on one, is that correct? And all means not faulting nobody on it, it's just, um, I think Commissioner Yance's schedule was hard for us to do these, uh, daytime, uh, special meetings with other committees, but.
Something, something to consider, this has little, if anything, to do with our budget. But, uh, you take like the, uh, appointment that Commissioner Yance has. If he's not gonna be able to meet those meetings, it's understandable. He's a very busy person. He has a lot of responsibility in his job, and he's probably doing the best he can, trying to juggle all the balls he's trying to juggle. But, but we can, with his permission, we can have a commissioner's appointee to serve in his place. It, it, it can be, it's, it could be our health director, it could be just, just a citizen with an interest in that area. We could appoint them to serve instead, but, you know, that's, we don't have to discuss that right now, 'cause that's down the road, if, if ever.
So that's, uh, I brought the idea last night, the occupancy tax, 'cause everybody seemed to be on board with something like that, putting it in place, and, uh, the occupancy tax.
Oh, that's been looked at before. Uh, there's an aversion in our county, uh, a, a negative view toward any new tax, even an occupancy tax, which most of the time would not be paid by our citizens, but would be paid by tourists.
Correct.
And at that, we did have a, a, an economic development advisory board, and I remember discussions on that board about an occup- occupancy tax. But there was never enough momentum in the direction of having it to make it happen. The one theory was, we just don't have that much lodging available in the county. So would we get tax from the park? I don't think so. There, there is.
It would, if, from the cabins.
Yeah, that's interesting. That's, that's a little bit more.
I, I, during the campaign, I mentioned it to a lot of people. Every single person said do it.
Yep.
There were no negatives, and everybody said it's a no-brainer.
And, and in all honesty, in all honesty for me, Commissioner Morris, I've never went out talking to people about it that much. I, I, I watched what our advisory board did, what they had to say, and.
We have a lot of people that are ordering people in, in bed and breakfasts and places around here, all over the place.
There's a lot more in this county than I ever thought there was, except, I mean, a whole lot more.
Have you talked, when you were talking to people, did you talk to people who were providing the service, any of those?
I did, when I ran.
And?
And I got a lot of requests, and so about having it. I went from Moore Springs, or the N, all the way down to Walnut Cove area where they got, and it was mostly bed and breakfasts. Most people were, I talked to, ever.
If I'm not mistaken, it, it has a specified use. You have to use it.
Terms of.
People that do that business, it goes back to them.
So it would be actually used to promote their businesses.
Correct.
That's right.
I'm not, I don't know the details, but probably need a proposed policy on doing it from somewhere that we can develop in another county or something.
I think Julie did.
See.
Julie definitely, yeah, I could, didn't say you had the policy or the.
They thought that has to be used for, uh, like the economics.
Right.
Or terrorism.
Correct, yeah.
Uh, one thing that kinda gives us a little bit of a safety valve, far as something we don't really wanna tackle directly as part of our budget process, is there's only one thing that can't be changed by a budget ordinance amendment, and that's the property tax rate. But we can come back, and if we wanna just defer this to later, which there does seem to be some interest, we can come back later in the year and take it, so, crap time-wise, and, and really deal with it.
I would, I would like to get it in place as soon as possible, especially right now, we're gonna.
It's on the place we're losing around.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a proposal from another county or something.
Oh, yeah, I'd like some information about it. One, one question, uh, who would decide how those funds are actually used? I mean, they're, they're used for specified purposes, but who, who would be?
If we get a policy, that would be a question.
So we would set the policy and say, this is how the funds will be used.
If we get somebody else's policy, it will probably.
Right.
I think we would be the ones that has lost, we could, for the, for those specific purposes, it's, are gonna be useful.
Very good.
I got a comment or two, which I probably need to say, it may be in, or Jamie is here, but. I'm starting trying to put a little bit of a, a position together, like, uh, you were talking about, everybody needs to do.
Correct.
Um, just like the first little cutout maybe half done, but the, um, we need us, we, we all have come up with a position on the school budget, but a capital and current expense. And that just involves really, um, I don't think we've gone to the point of separating roofs out into the four cent fund. I think we've just come to probably deal with what we've been proposed at this point, of decide how much of that capital list we wanted to do, and then just really come up with a dollar amount for current expense. Plus, we've got, we've got the recommended budget, plus we got the six hundred and forty thousand, three fifty-one, which is to keep everything the same amount that on that gave us. And we got, um, that list of, A, I think it was discretionary items that the Board of Education requested. So you, then, I guess the last thing will be, if we decide to give them a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance, we gotta figure out how much we would have to add to what they already have for them to have a two hundred and fifty thousand balance. But really, that's just, that's just each commissioner coming up with a number, comparing numbers, I guess. I think we were kind of in agreement with doing the twenty, twenty items on the capital list the other night, adding that seventy-five K and doing that one additional thing, West Side.
With the buses?
Yeah, with, um, the track field, track and field. We gotta have that, and then we gotta have like just a number for current expense, plus that. I mean, with that, that fund balance would be part of the current expense, right, Julie? That would just be part. We just gotta have one number for the capital and one number for the current spend. So then the next thing, we've got this capital projects list, and we've got the EMF station, six hundred and fifty thousand. And, uh, we got the solid transfer, solid waste transfer stations. Solid waste transfer stations, seven seventy, and we already talked today about splitting up the land, so you could gain three hundred and something thousand there if I was doing one of them. We've got the fuel depot, we gotta do a yes or no. We have the storage building, which is five hundred thousand, we gotta do a yes or no. Solid waste building and the scale house, we gotta do a yes or no. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then also put under this, which wasn't listed in the budget, the, the water project at Meadow, if we're gonna hire an engineering firm or something to start new branch for that, so we'd have to, I guess, come up with a number of what we thought that would cost. Then in addition to those, we got similar projects that are under public buildings. That's the HVAC, that's twenty-eight thousand, and a boiler replacement for this building's twenty-five thousand. MO in the prison camp, a hundred and twenty thousand. Place in the roof at the jail, I guess that's the old part of the jail, that's eighty-five thousand. The five thousand do the recovering of the lobby views and the port house. But, you know, so that's, there's a lot of money that you could get out of that, that area by either doing or not doing those projects. Then we gotta decide on a COLA amount, what COLA percentage we want. Um, I think we've done the equipment list. We, we were pretty much in agreement with what we think should be in that, with the addition, with the exception of deciding about additional ambulance for the city. We got a half a million in economic development with no specific plan for how it's gonna be used. So I would, I would think we could possibly, unless we have something, unless we're gonna use that maybe to hire somebody to work on the water at Meadows or something, then we may have more in there than we really have to have. We have the, the four cent fund, whether or not we're gonna put the normal amount in it, and, and with that, we can go for anywhere from one dollar, or really from zero dollars to a million, one thirty-nine, seven seventy-five. And I don't, it's not like an either-or. We can do those two numbers or some, anything in between, depending how we wanna try to prioritize other budget items, if we wanna, uh, wanna use that to help balance the budget. And we got these new positions and reclassifications that we talked about the other night, and we sort of agreed on a, a certain group that's not final, but it was like a tentative agreement. That's seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to play with. And then as a result of our discussions the other night, we had a hundred and eight thousand dollars in savings that I guess counts toward being able to.
Those things you listed in public buildings, they're in that equipment list, and all that's coming from capital reserve. It's not coming to help.
Then what, reduce it? Okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that technicality of the budget, but then with the point that Jamie made the other night, is that we would take every bit of that capital reserve money, leave it back in general fund if we wanted to. So it, it is separate, but then in, in a, one way of looking at it, if you're really getting into hard budget decisions, you could, you could use it for general.
You're not transferring any, any into it.
With that. Yeah. That's just like a partial list. I guess we need, I guess we need to, maybe one approach to this would be, take the, the list that we were, used the other night, and add anything to it we need to, and just, and go through and see if we have some definite, um, positions, like, I think we all have a definite position on the fund balance. If we have a definite position on the COLAs, see if we have a definite position on some of these items where we could at least get them out of the way. And if you knew what you're gonna do on COLA, or, or fund balance, or this, that, or the other, you had that locked in, then it would help you be able to resolve the other. Know how much money you have left. Anyway, that's kind of my thought process up to this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what Commissioner Morris is talking about is absolutely correct. Uh, Julia and Shannon have been working on some number crunching here also, and I would love for Julia to go over some numbers here and let Rick and you guys have, have what she's come up with, and what would, which you could do that would cut this down to where you would have a twenty-five percent fund balance.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, they're, they're speaking very loud this part of it. I think you're whispering. Yeah, that's on.
Can you turn it up some?
This is the spot right here, we've got this boundary line, that's not quite as thick, that is good.
Like also with her laptop blocking.
Oh, or that maybe, I don't know, maybe so. If I move it much apart, it makes that weird reverb noise.
I mean, just looking at figures, I was just sitting here, you know, off some stuff that's been talked about. If you cut the, uh, economic development transfer to capital reserve and half, that'd be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You don't do the sixth unit, the staff is what you say, because we're borrowing money to do the ambulance. So that really is not cut, it's cutting your budget, but it's not cutting your amount of fund balance. And then time to half, if you wanted to do that, it costs four hundred and twenty-three thousand three fifty.
But sure, that counts.
Four twenty-three three fifty. If we save seventy-five percent of what we, the worst scenario, that's what the total would be.
And that includes communications.
And that's for EMS and communications, because we change EMS, we gotta change communications.
Yeah.
And if you did half of the transfer up to the four cent fund, which would be five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, that'd be a savings of seven oh four one seventy-two. And you would use four million one hundred and ten thousand three sixty-one from fund balance, and that'd make your fund balance at approximately twenty-five point forty-three.
How much are you putting in if you do it, what did you say? How much are you putting in the fund balance, I mean, into the four cent fund?
Five sixty-nine eight eighty-eight, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Five sixty-nine eight eighty-eight, that's half of that one point one.
Okay.
And if y'all wanna see a model of what that will do to them, I could, I've got the model that I can plug that into.
If we done this, is it, is, is take it down to twenty-five?
Point four three.
Twenty-five, point four three.
And no tax increase.
Like I said, that's just, I just over here crunching some numbers and.
You'll be everything she's running with no tax.
Okay.
For this year?
This year, yeah.
It does have an embedded tax increase.
And like you said, you know, you did, you did all the transfer of the money to the building to capital reserve this year.
Can you go through your list again, please? Let me make notes this time.
Changing the economic development transfer capital reserve from five hundred thousand to two fifty.
To two fifty, okay.
And taking out the EMS staff, which is three oh seven six thirty-four.
That's for the sixth, sixth unit.
And your budget would go down because we take the ambulance out, but that's being financed, so that's in another revenue.
For how many years? Three years? Are we financing our ambulance?
Well, we have to show this proceeds, the total amount is proceeds from financing, and usually we do three to four years.
Three to four years. Okay, um, and that amount for the staff was?
Three oh seven six thirty-four. And if you do the true time and a half for EMS, it costs you approximately four twenty-three three fifty.
You wanna explain to them exactly where the numbers are.
That's doing seventy-five percent of the worst scenario, that nobody took off time, and we know people take off time.
More likely it won't reach that number.
We need like seventy-five percent of that, so.
Sure, no more than number, not greater than number.
Then doing half of the one point one thirty-nine going to the four cent fund, which would be five hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, what was that again, please?
You know, we've been transferring one million one thirty-nine seven seventy-five to the four cent fund from general fund, because that's part of the amount. If you only did half this year, you'd save five sixty-nine eight eighty-eight.
Five sixty-nine, or five seventy, roughly.
And that totals seven oh four one seventy-two.
I'm a code.
And then you would use four million. I gotta go back over to my other sheet.
Julia, does, what, what kind of COLA is in these?
Four percent COLA.
A four percent COLA is in there?
That's the same exact numbers that were here yesterday, just with those things cut out.
How much for the schools?
That would be our recommended, but.
That would be, they're holding them where they are at this time, they're giving them no extra money.
You mean hold them, giving them the six hundred and something thousand?
Yes.
But not anything out of their discretionary.
Not anything from fund balance or any of the other items.
So that amount is twelve one forty-five five fifty-nine? What, what amount do you have in there?
What is it, twelve?
Twelve, twelve nine ninety-four nine thirty-three, if you include the copper springs operating expenses.
Twelve one.
Twelve million nine ninety-four nine thirty-three.
That's, um, from the four cent fund, right?
The ninety thousand three hundred dollars is from the four cent fund.
For copper springs?
Yes. The total not including copper springs is twelve million nine oh four six thirty-three.
Okay, I have a recommended amount in our manager's proposed budget of twelve one forty-five five fifty-nine, so how did that go from this right here on, on this? No, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at last year's number, my apologies, you're absolutely right.
See, we took last year's, what we appropriated, plus the budget amendment that we did for the supplements of two thirteen to thirty-one, and added, they said to maintain their current operating, that would mean four eighty-eight eight fifty-one, and then school funding reductions was one fifty-one five hundred, and that made up the twelve million nine oh four six thirty-three.
Twelve nine oh four six thirty-three. Now, my, my position all along is that the teacher's supplements were in the previous budget, I know for pretty much a fact that they were, but I'm not going there, I don't care to keep that argument going. I just, I just think it behooves us, this board, me, as being part of the board, to come up with an amount to give them, and what they do with it, they're gonna do anyway, so we're not gonna be able to say do this or do that. So it just is a matter of coming up with an amount that's fair to them, fair to the county, fair to the citizens, and say, let's go with it. Now, when I look at the numbers, they're scary. We, we're going from, um, in seventeen eighteen, what was the two hundred thousand for in sixteen seventeen, was that Chromebooks, or what did we do a special appropriation for?
That was the matching grant from, uh, Golden Leaf.
Okay, and, and, you know, the, the budget amount, the budget amounts have been ten, 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 then it, almost eleven, and then twelve, and then thirteen. The increase from sixteen seventeen to, um, nineteen twenty is about forty percent in four years. Help me with my math, I'm not, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer when it comes to numbers, so, but, um, but just going by current expense amounts, it's coming out, it was thirty-six percent, um, from sixteen seventeen to eighteen nineteen, not counting the special appropriation for the grant. And, and then if you add that in, it's thirty-three percent, and then we're adding another eight hundred thousand, how much? Seven hundred thousand and some? So, so in, from sixteen seventeen to nineteen twenty, it's gone up close to forty percent? Is that what you get, Julia, or?
What are you saying?
I'm saying the current expense amount. I'm looking at the historical data. Has gone up about, approaching, looks like, I'm just throwing it in my head, so better numbers would, more accurate numbers would be better, about forty percent in four years.
For the whole period of time, or just?
Can I show you?
Yeah. I think he's adding each year, like there's an eleven percent increase the last year, I think he's just adding each year.
I had a ten point seven two percent.
It's close to a bit, I think he's just adding them together, is what I think.
For four years.
For four years, I think.
From sixteen seventeen to this budget. And the reason I picked sixteen seventeen was because we had one, two, three, four, five, six budgets that were pretty much the same, and then in seventeen eighteen, there was a good size jump, and in eighteen nineteen, there was a really good size increase, and then.
Over three budgets, seventeen point seventy-four, ninety-four percent increase.
Do what now?
Over those three budgets, if you add up the percentages, it comes to seventeen point seven four nine four.
Yes, you're talking about current spend.
Current spend's on the. Because you had a decrease of two point four seven six nine sixteen seventeen.
But if you use that, um.
You had a nine point four nine in seventeen eighteen, you had a ten point seven two in eighteen nineteen.
All right, if you subtract, um, what is the current amount, twelve nine oh four? Twelve nine oh four, is that the amount that's in the budget? Twelve nine oh four?
Nine ninety-four. It's a seven point oh eight increase over last year.
Okay, all these go with the ten, if you wanna go with the ten thousand seventeen, which includes the special appropriation, that's, subtract ten seven, ten thou- ten billion seventeen thousand from twelve thousand nine oh four. Twelve million, I'm sorry.
That'd be a twenty-eight point eight two percent increase.
What did you divide by?
I divided it by the appropriation of the million oh seventeen.
Yeah, that's that would be a twenty-nine percent increase, right? And that's, um, in three years.
That's about.
Or four years.
Seven point twenty percent average. Over four years.
And interestingly, it, it did not change at all until it, it's basically the same figure each year until sixteen seventeen.
That's probably why it had to change so much after that. If you think about it. I mean, I don't know what the relevancy is of what the percentage increase was. It's really all about what's the requirement, the requirement.
Well, I'm just looking for what seems reasonable, what, what seems fair compared to the county's percentage increase and.
Look, that's apples and oranges, school system and a county government. One's an apple, one's an orange, I don't understand the, trying to compare the percentages necessarily, it doesn't, doesn't seem like a relative piece of important data to me.
Yeah, I think your thought process goes like this, and mine goes like that.
My thought process is, what is the requirement? Does prioritize the requirement, and then what can we fund, where do we draw the cutoff line?
That's what I'm trying to get to.
I mean, that's my thought process. It ain't about what percentage the increase was. I mean, I mean, it's, perhaps perfectly, if you wanna have it based on the percentage increase, that's.
I'm just having trouble kinda coming to grips with it, because for the schools.
You start me for five years, then it can certainly, that's the following five years, if you, uh, that's what I needed, if funds became available. And you can starve, you can starve, and I'm not saying we starve, I'm just saying.
I hope not.
If you starve, if you starve it for long enough, then that causes all kinds of things to go wrong, that will have to cost a lot more to fix later. And therefore, you have probably bigger percentage increases. If you starve them, and a good example would be if you starve a organization and don't allow it to ever fix a roof, because you're starving it, and the roof's gonna leak, and it'll have mold. At some point, you gotta fix the roof and the mold.
I totally, totally agree, we're not, but we're not talking capital expense, are we?
No, she's had an example of, our expenses have a lot of similarities, I mean, they're all requirements that produce the education, the facilities, and the things that go on in the facility, so.
I would be very interested in Commissioner Mendonau's observation, since he's sort of front-lined with this, he's actually been there and had to use these numbers.
I need, I'm looking for a couple of numbers, what was our, what was the total budget last year?
For schools?
No.
Oh, for the county, forty-nine.
What was the county budget last year? Forty-nine.
Forty-nine something, I can't remember.
Give me a second, I can look it up.
Need a number.
Thirty-seven million one twenty-two six forty-nine.
But the total forty-nine.
Total general fund budget only.
Thirty-seven one.
One twenty-two six forty-eight.
That's just the county.
That's the county.
Uh-huh, yes.
And we add school.
I hang on, I have to go to another sheet. I wish this thing would scroll faster, but.
The schools were like twelve million forty-five.
Sorry, not in writing.
Twelve one forty-five five two.
And if you want school popper springs or not?
Yeah.
Okay, twelve million one forty-five five fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine? So I had that, um, telling you what our total was.
Forty-nine million two sixty-eight two oh seven.
Forty-nine million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and seven dollars was our total budget for the county. Okay, last year for the school on capital outline, they got one million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that another score?
That's correct.
That's what they got last year. One million seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that is accurate then. What was current last year? Current was?
Well, man, do you want it with popper springs?
Uh. Uh-huh.
One forty-five five fifty-nine. That's total thirteen million nine twenty-five five fifty-nine.
Nine twenty-five.
Nine forty-five five fifty-nine.
So we gave the school system last year a current and capital added together, thirteen million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred... Jake, wasn't your recommendation at the very beginning, very first thing that you gave us, capital for the schools was, now, did you maintain the same as what they had last year?
Yes.
One million seven hundred eighty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Is that your original recommendation?
Yes, sir, boss.
Current expense, original recommendation?
Popper in it. Twelve million three fifty-eight seven ninety. That's total. That totals fourteen million one thirty-eight seven ninety.
What was that number, please, again?
Fourteen million one thirty-eight seven nine. Fourteen one thirty-eight seven ninety, and if you subtract thirteen million nine hundred and twenty-five five fifty-nine, that would be an increase.
Increase of two hundred thirteen thousand two thirty-one, which was that for the supplement?
Two hundred thirteen thousand two thirty-one.
There... There was a, a question about a one point one seven six million additional for the items that were in blue requested by the schools. Uh, that was one point one seven six, that were...
Talking about the hundreds in blue on the school, well, that's...
Oh, okay, hang on, I got it right here. Where are you?
No, we're, that's still pending, I believe.
Well, see, that's the four eighty-eight eight fifty-one, that's in the blue, and that's the maintain current operations.
That's six hundred, not four hundred, six hundred to maintain.
The, the...
But it's not that universal, that.
The number I mentioned, I think, is at the top of that page.
This is what they handed out your budget.
She's another, I want to show you. The one budget they got that red band on, that's six...
Oh, yeah, you add the one fifty-one.
Yes, that's six four...
The lost revenues they have, they're not using any fund balance, and then the decrease in the revenues, that's one, two, I'm the increase. That's the one fifty-one, and then you add the four eighty-eight eight fifty-one, the one fifty-one five hundred, that's six forty, fifty-one.
And she's got that on this one with the red band on, that value form. Which the board is going to have to really change, from what I recommended, because my recommendation does not include that one.
That's the one thing that we haven't made any decisions on, my orders.
We can't have that, no, uh-uh, the sheets I hand the board, just taking consideration that's right here. The sheets I handed out, you know, I'm just, final, it's not final, it's just a workable, working final. I was just considering that, and... The six forty five. Make it the twelve nine oh four six thirty three. Anyone else need a highlighter?
You showing me right now?
That's just for y'all to decide, discussing it. And it will take six hundred sixty thousand eight eighty from general fund, or you changing the tax rate? Forget it. Take it, and it two schools is a paper way from general fund, on transferring from general fund.
Just one quick question, Julia, on the forty-nine two sixty-eight two oh seven that you had just added up for Ronnie, the, um, that's, at the current budget we're operating under now, the total, you know, the school and the county, did that go up or down from the previous year?
It went up to two thirty-one.
It went, it's higher?
Two thirty-one, two thirteen, two thirty-one, we did a budget amendment.
I'm just talking about what the, was the total budget for the previous year higher or lower than that?
Yeah, see, that total budget that I have that was approved does not include that budget amendment.
Okay.
You can't change the budget that the board approved, only sheets. That's the reason I documented that that two thirteen, two thirty-one was the budget amendment that was done for the supplements.
That, my, my question though is, was the final approved budget was forty-nine two sixty-eight two oh seven, whenever you add the school, that's, did you just add it up for him?
He just added that up for that title.
You know, before you?
Nine two sixty-eight two oh seven.
Oh, that was added to the general fund and the school together.
Yeah, so my question is, the pre, was that higher or lower than the previous year's final budget?
What are you talking about?
I'm approving it.
Sixteen seventeen 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 seventeen.
I think it was lower.
Our final budget for seventeen eighteen was forty-nine million oh forty-five one oh one.
And the final budget for sixteen seventeen? The final budget for sixteen seventeen was what?
About forty-five million nine eighty-one seven fifty. Forty-five million nine eighty-one seven fifty.
So, so you said this one went up a little bit from the one previous, forty-nine, went up a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, it went up six point six six percent. That what you're asking from six, nine? Sixteen seventeen, seventeen eighteen, seventeen eighteen budget went up six point six six percent.
Nail some things down.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm...
Uh, Julia, you have run some numbers, and you came out with twenty-five point something in our fund balance, using the numbers that you just shared with us. You heard Commissioner Morris review his list of items we haven't decided on yet. And it seemed like only a few of those items were in what you have used to come up with the twenty-five one, one four three, there's others still out there that we haven't dealt with yet that could, could have some impact on our budget. Matter of fact, some of the numbers that you have in the budget might have to be changed if we include items on Commissioner Morris's list, Commissioner Menonaw's list, my list, yours, and Commissioner Yance's. And it's going to come down to what we leave in and what we, what we, uh...
And like I said, you know, you transfer, if, I mean, the board can choose not to transfer those monies to capital fund, or less than it, like I've got two hundred thousand going over back over there for public buildings for future H-bags, etc. I mean, if you don't want to do that this year, you know, you can take that out, that's two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that's, that's something more.
Right. I know for years, we, we anguished over how to get our parking lots paved.
Yeah.
I remember those years. And, and probably Commissioner Morris does also. But, um, we're getting closer, it seems like, but we're not there yet. We still have some decisions to make. And I think one of the main topics, um, that we'll be discussing later, um, is how we'll deal with school security. Because I don't think that's came up yet.
Until your point, I mean, if you're going to do sound budgeting, and you do flaky budgeting, or you do realistic budgeting, and you got a bunch of air conditioners that are going to go out and cost you a ton of money to fix, and you just decide, well, I just won't budget for them, and when they break, you're still going to have to yank the money out of the general fund, so...
Understand.
It, it, you know, it's, um, for a budget to be credible, it needs to have at least a reasonable balance of reality to it.
One, one thing, Commissioner Morris, that might add some, a higher level of credibility to our capital needs is, if I'm understanding correctly, our, our county manager is in the process of getting a five-year capital needs assessment done. And I think condition of air conditioners, roofs, how encompassing would that be, Jake, as far as potential future capital needs? Because Commissioner Morris is right, it is what it is, the needs are there, and the more information we have regarding how many and how costly they're going to be, I think the better way to quit will be to make decisions. And I believe, doesn't this all soon include some capital needs of the schools?
Scope of work, Mr. Commissioner Walker, is, he's looking at parking lot sidewalk landscaping, grading, water issues, he's looking at all wall finishing, doors, windows, roof surfaces, he is looking at all flooring, he's looking at all ceilings, he's looking at heating and air, plumbing, electrical, and communications.
Very comprehensive, pretty thorough.
Yes, it's pretty thorough. And as far as the scope of work that is laid out here, and is laid out by him and a team of mechanical engineers and electrical engineers.
Will they also, uh, offer some priorities as far as which are, which of these needs are...
Absolutely.
Most urgent compared, which can be kind of out there ways?
Absolutely. You would have all your structures that the county has to look after, school and general. And they would say, this year, you really need to take care of these issues, and then year one these, and year two these, and year three these, and so on, after a five-year plan to where you're ready to start looking at some reoccurring issues that will probably come back around again.
You mentioned doors and walls, is, is there some cosmetic needs also included in that study? Or is it all just functional?
Uh, it's all something, the functional need of what the actual structure is like for, for my, cosmetic, when you get into, uh, redesigning, that's totally different.
I was talking about painting and just general upkeep, yeah.
Uh, but that's probably, that's probably your wall finishing, it's got it in here.
Right.
The building interior is your, would be painted, or, 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 uh, or replacing.
Sure.
Depending on what...
I, I like the sound of that.
And your windows, re-glazing or replacing, depending on what the cost of, uh, it would be to finish, and then your ceiling also, and then, and then you will get into your electrical and plumbing and communications and heating and air.
Let me ask you this, and maybe Commissioner Morris might have some thoughts also, but given what information we'll be receiving, and hopefully, not that far into the future as far as capital needs, what, how can we best deal with this in our current budget?
I think, and this is just my opinion, how the board's going out, this is an issue the board's got to really look into, and it'll be their decision, I'm sure you have your right one, but if I made a recommendation, it's probably going to be so massive, it's most likely what Mr. Commissioner Morris has already said, this is going to be a fin- financing issue. That you would go to your four cent fund and your general fund, or, or you would just go and say, we need to borrow ten million dollars this year to fix things that's got to be brought up, or five million, or whatever it may be. But you're looking, you're looking at a financing issue.
Where do we have this information to work with?
I'm hoping, now that, now that the schools come on, it may delay it a little bit, but I was looking for the first of the year on all the counties. He, he, he said that he would have, he would start as soon as possible, and by January of twenty twenty, he would have you a five-year plan on the county structures. Now that the schools brought in, it may delay it a little bit, but surely you would have something to where you would be ready to really jump into next year's budget and start attacking some of these issues that you have with your structures. But if he can go ahead and knock out the counties, and at the same time, working with the schools, and that come in later, maybe you could, maybe you could handle some issues that some of the buildings need to be fixed now with the county. You take the old, the old government, the old courthouse down, you've got issues that need to be taken care of and managed on the end. I have a quick question for anybody who knows the answer. Either when I was here the first time as county manager, or the second time, I can't remember, the school has, the school system has some big fund balances. It seems to me like, wasn't there like a million or something? Where did that money come from? I mean, that was, I guess that was spent during, on either capital or current expense? Both, was it both, where did it come from? Both, was it both, where did it come from? Was that, uh...
It was monies that they had left them, what we give them, that had accumulated over years.
Wasn't some, didn't some of that, uh, what you call that money Obama did when he came? What do you call that, what was that? None of that, didn't, the federal government didn't give them any extra money for the bigger fund?
Their fund balance was the fund balance from county money only, the federal state monies, wasn't in there.
Never got any federal, out of any of that Obama stuff?
They got some, they got some, but it's not in that, it wasn't in that fund balance.
Well, what was, they were still, any federal money they got was still spent on either capital or current expense, weren't they?
I guess.
Where, how did they, and how did they have a million dollar fund balance?
It was left, that was money from current expense, and that accumulated over years. And they used it for stuff that came up, or when Dr. Carroll was here, he had me every year in capitals, they could go ahead and put in there, they could move up to a million dollars out of that current spent fund balance on capital if something come up, so they wouldn't have to come back up here and ask the board to do it.
So was the county commissioners back then just giving them enough money to have million dollar fund balances?
They just give them what?
What was that?
Appropriation.
I just know there was a big fund balance for a long time.
It was more than a million some dollars, yes.
And it's not there anymore, it costs you, obviously. She has to go up to the next meeting.
Yeah. Need to go ahead and recess this meeting.
Yeah, you, um, unless you're planning on doing anything later, you'll, you need to recess to the June thirteenth at six meeting.
Don't, uh, meet again after the meeting with the school board, or just wait till Thursday? I'm, I'm good either way.
You, you can recess to the conclusion of the school board, but I'm not sure how, you know, how much time you're gonna want to feel like staying when that's over, but I don't know.
I think we're all staying long, maybe any day or two.
I, I was gonna say, I don't care for a marathon, but maybe thirty minutes to an hour, just to kind of collect our thoughts after the meeting with the school board and see where we go from there.
I don't foresee your school board meeting should be terribly long. So if you do that, and then you can, from that meeting recess to Thursday, so just recess to the conclusion of the board education meeting.
Well, we'll go ahead and recess to the conclusion of our meeting with the school board.
Did you stay where we're at, Shannon, or are you going to...
Yeah, that's, that's fine, um, what I was thinking was...